All right, we'd like to call to order the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission, April 21st, 2025 meeting. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Here.
Ms. Strain?
Here.
Mr. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Bolovski?
Here.
Mr. Millsbaugh?
Here.
Ms. Gold?
Present.
Chairman Darpino?
Here. Okay, next up is approval of the minutes. We have several sets of minutes here, so we'll begin with the first one, which is February 10th, 2025. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Gold, second by Mr. Khan. Any corrections or discussion? I had none. Okay. All in favor state by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, February 10th, 2025 minutes are approved. Next up is the February 24th, 2025 minutes. Can I get a motion?
Moved, so moved.
Moved by Ms. Bolovski, and I will second those. Any comments or discussion? I had none. Okay. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Oh, you abstain, okay. And any opposed? And one abstained. Okay, so those are approved, February 24th, 2025. Next up is the March 10th, 2025 minutes. May I get a motion?
It's moved.
Moved by Mr. Khan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gold. Any discussion or comments?
I have to abstain on that one as well.
Okay, we have one abstained. Okay. I had no corrections. All right, all in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, March 10th, 2025 meeting minutes are approved. Next up are the March 24th, 2025 minutes. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Strain. I will second them. Any comments or corrections? I had a couple minor ones. The town is looking into just a correction on one of the applications for Dave's Hot Chicken.
The resolution number.
The resolution number.
Yes.
So that's just an administrative item. That refers to line 33. Line 203, I believe the word "for" needs to be changed to "from." Minor grammar. Okay. Any other comments? So I'm going to propose that we amend line 33, which will be administrative thing for the resolution number as a correction, and line 203. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then, all in favor of the amended March 24th, 2025 meeting minutes? State by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. March 20th, 24th amended 2025 minutes are approved. Last one is the April 7th, 2025 meeting minutes. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Khan, and I will second those.
And I have to abstain on that as well.
Okay, one abstention?
I'll abstain, I was not at that meeting.
Okay, I believe that gives us... Okay, good, okay. I had no comments or corrections. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, April 7th, 2025 meeting minutes are approved. Thank you very much for getting caught up on these. I know this has been quite a path, and there's a lot to read this weekend.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have no public hearings, so we'll move directly to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is open to anyone wishing to speak about any zoning or planning matter for the Town and Niskiuna. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Privilege of the floor is now open. Okay, it looks like no one's present. Laura, do we have anyone online or any correspondence?
Nope, no one online and no correspondence.
Okay. Last call for privilege of the floor? All right, privilege of the floor is closed. Moving on, we have no unfinished business, so next up is new business. First up is a resolution 2025-11, a resolution to call for a public hearing for a new guardhouse and a new patio at GE Vernova at 2690 Balltown Road. Project leads are Ms. Bolovski and myself. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that this planning board does hereby call for a public hearing to be held on Monday, May 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in the Niskiuna Town Hall, One Niskiuna Circle, to consider the application of Matt Savoy for GE Vernova for a new guardhouse and a new patio at 2690 Balltown Road. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Ms. Bolovski. I will second that. Do we have a representative from the applicant here?
Hello, my name is Matt Savoy, I'm with GE Vernova, I'm the facilities operations leader.
Think we're all familiar with the project, its formality at this point, so...
Sure.
Anything else to add?
Nope, nothing else to add, obviously here to welcome and answer any questions I potentially can. Again, we've got some illustrations as backup, if we need to point to any illustrations.
Yeah, they're very helpful.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to mention that you can see that the drawing set is much more complete and further along in the engineering, and the TDE has been paid for, hired, and begun the review. And this plan set also shows the proposed landscaping, so the tree council can take a look at it and anything else that needs to be done on it, but it definitely submitted probably what we would need as the most technical set of plans now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing as there's no further discussion, Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Ms. Strain?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Ms. Bolovski?
Aye.
Mr. Millsbaugh?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairman Darpino?
Aye, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you at the next meeting. Okay, next up is a recommendation to the ZBA for 3418 Albany Street, Fillmore Avenue. This is a recommendation to the ZBA for a lot line adjustment requiring area variances. I will be the lead on this one. So the recap of this project is we have two lots, one is trapezoidal in shape and the other one is an L shape that moves around. The proposed lot line adjustments are to make the... To make the lots a little bit more conforming, thank you Laura, a little bit more conforming, although not rectangular, they definitely work out better with the situation of the houses that are on the property lines, adjusting the backyards for the one, and then I believe there is a shed that falls right on, or an outside structure that falls right on one of the lot lines. So this will be a recommendation over to zoning for their approval. Okay. I'll open it up to discussion.
Just, it encompasses, let's see, four area variances on one parcel and three on Albany Street, and three area variances on 191 Fillmore. Some of the variances actually make the existing non-conformities better. Some of them do, like for instance, make one of the lots smaller, but that's in that table at the front. All in all, I think that, like Mr. Darpino had said, there are current non-conformities that are made better, like the shed is actually over the lot line now and it would be 0.3 in. And some of them, even though they're really not changing that much, like the lot depth of 191 Fillmore, I don't think that's changing that much, but it still does get cited, so. So.
Okay. As stated in the package, this is compliant with the current 2013 comprehensive plan. So we don't have any further discussion, we'll go down to the three questions that we ask. So these are the questions that we will pose to the ZBA for their consideration. So the first up is effect on the comprehensive plan. I would say this has no effect on the comprehensive plan.
Agreed.
So, all in favor that this has no effect on the comprehensive plan, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number two, suitability of use. Suitable as proposed, I would say that both residential lots are there, that doesn't have any other impact on adjacent parcels, and since it's remaining residential, not changing any of the uses or going for a different type of zoning change, I think it is suitable.
It makes them a little more sensible.
Okay.
Yeah, and I got this mixed up, actually, the first time I did the denial, but it actually takes one that's a through lot with frontages on both Albany and Fillmore, and it makes it more conforming by not having the two front yards, which is discouraged in our zoning code.
Okay.
Those are people who love corner lots.
Yeah, but this is actually a through lot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So you have no backyard.
Okay. All right, all in favor of suitability of use being suitable, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then finally, the recommendation. Make the recommendation to approve the application as submitted to the zoning board of appeals. Any other discussion?
Pretty straightforward.
All right. All in favor of making the recommendation as the application is submitted to the ZBA, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'll hand this down to Laura after, but that will go to the ZBA, and will get posted on that.
And Laura, you have the arguments, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the ZBA will have to go through each area variance, and they haven't had the background that you guys have, but yeah.
Yeah, it just makes sense.
Good. Okay, that finishes up the new business. We'll move on to discussion items. First up is 2690 Balltown Road, GE Vernova, a site plan application for a new signage. This is a new application, so we do not have a project lead. However, I have to recuse myself from this project because I have a current project ongoing with AJ Signs, and I believe Ms. Bolovski is going to take over and run point on this one.
Thanks. Can you state your name and just kind of do an overview of the project for us?
Yep, Tom Wheeler with AJ Sign Company. Basically, we're looking to do some new signage on the new Vernova building that you guys are familiar with. I can start on Balltown Road. This is an existing monument sign. We're gonna simply reface what's there, so same sign, same structure, just a new face. From there, we go to the guard shack that you just talked about, so we're gonna do a set of halo letters on the guard shack. So aluminum face, aluminum returns, stood off a little bit for a soft glow around them, not very bright at all.
Are those... Just clarify for me, Tom. So we're looking at the day version and the night version, is that right?
Correct, yeah. The wood background is the day version.
And then that's...
And then down below is the night version.
And would that be 24/7, or what would the hours be for that? Not that it's really gonna have an impact where it is, but...
I mean, it would only be illuminated when it's dark.
Yeah.
This is the main building, the big building that's up. Upper left-hand corner of the building, as you face it coming in off of Balltown, we're gonna do another halo set of letters, so same construction, aluminum face, aluminum returns, stood off, so the light comes out the back of the letter and creates a soft halo glow.
And will that be visible from Balltown? Do we know?
No, can't see that from Balltown.
With the leaf off, you can see the top of the roof, maybe. It's not super visible. You can actually see the top of that building from Balltown Road, though. Yeah.
I would think with the residential around it, excuse me, they probably couldn't see anything.
As soon as the leaves come on, you won't be able to see anything, but right now you can just barely see the top of the building.
And it's really, it really doesn't cast much light, because the light actually goes into the back of the aluminum letter and just spills out a little bit, it's LED, so it's got a very short throw, so it's, it sounds like a spotlight that shines light out, it's really just a soft glow. Next, we have the Welcome Center, so the building comes down as you're facing it to the left to the Welcome Center, so there's gonna be a sign on the back of the Welcome Center. And these are actually not illuminated, so there's aluminum letters, no lighting.
Okay.
This is building names, which we still don't know the actual names, so we're kind of here as a placeholder for these. They are, I believe they're gonna be not illuminated, so just aluminum letters again. And again, we don't know what they say, we're trying to pick something big so we can get some square footage and a concept.
So where's that going on this, Tom?
There's red, if you look at the drawing.
Okay.
There's the red.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, and then to the left, there's the other, yep.
Okay.
Like, for instance, we call this one the DAC building, but GE may not end up calling it the DAC building, but if it was, that would just say DAC building in red.
Yeah, we just don't know what the name is yet.
Okay.
So these signs are larger than are allowed, and even though our code allows in that zoning to have multiple principal buildings on a single lot, it only allows for a single facade sign. So maybe a little bit of a oversight on the code there, but they would essentially need a variance for four of the five facade signs, and then for the square footage of, you know, the remainder of the facade sign. So I think Clark and I gave them one 42.4, and then they've got the guard shack sign, the large DAC sign, DAC building sign is 292 square feet, and then the two building names signs are asking for 42.4 square feet. In this zone, we do not have the power to waive, so we would give them feedback and potentially get them before the zoning board in May or June.
Well, ordinarily, I think I'm fine with the ordinance, but in this case, the guard shack is some 1,700 feet back, the buildings are even further, and to me, that allows more room for signage, because it's not gonna be real visible from the road unless you know to look for it.
Yeah.
So I think that is an argument that, you know, will allow us to maybe get a favorable recommendation to the ZBA, but as we've done with other applicants, did you ever create a set of conforming set of signs?
A conforming set of signs?
Yeah, that won't need to get a variance?
Uh, we did not. They'd be so small, you wouldn't be able to see them. The building's enormous.
Well, you could have one 50-square-foot sign on the DAC building. None of the other signs would be allowed.
Does that quote allowed for like a mall, what's it called, a barn, monarchy, or a sign that indicates? Monument sign.
Um, yes, it does allow for the monument sign. The monument sign isn't cited, I actually don't have that in here.
So this will have a monument sign, and also they're asking for signage?
Yeah, the monument sign actually is in conformance.
Yeah, the monument sign doesn't need any variances.
Right.
And that's the existing sign.
Yeah.
Yes, so in the, and Clark did all the work on this, because he's amazing sign person. So the Balltown Welcome Center rear is actually 49.2, and you're allowed 50. So this one sign here, that one would be the one that would meet code there on the back of the building. And so we're not citing that for any at all, and all of the rest need a variance for one additional sign or each of the signs, and then they need a variance for the associated square footage.
I mean, it's, to your point, it's a pretty significant property to only allow one sign on one building.
And just for people to find their way, right?
Right.
So.
Yeah.
I think this is a reasonable, but it's not our judgment, right? This goes to zoning and...
Right, you do the make, make the recommendation, so if you had feedback, you could share it with them now, and then the next time you'd see it, it would be a recommendation. I did want to point out for the DAC building, we actually looked at drawings that had a sign like this, but it wasn't approved because they didn't have the sign company yet. But when we were looking at the original DAC building, we were looking at it with something like this on there, because this is a technology that they will be bringing people to our town to see, and so the, I think the idea, which, you know, we also talked about with Momentive, Momentive, you know, has the two facade signs, one pretty big in the back, is, you know, when they're at the building, it's just, it's like, kind of like their branding, morale type things that they do when you get back into these complexes.
Yeah. My comment was a recommendation, really. Number one, consistency with our past precedents is with people bring signs, and especially if you show a rendering and it shows like you can't see anything, gets your point across.
Yeah, I could do that.
Right, so if you had a set of code compliant signs, size-wise at least, and then the variance relative to allowing that second sign, right, I think should be okay.
And I think the lot layout is significant, too, because these buildings don't front on public roads, and they're not visible. They're more, they're more like just interior buildings to the compound.
Right, but again, those are arguments mitigating towards the ZBA, recommend, positive recommendation, that the end of the day, the code's the code, right?
Exactly.
It is, but I hear what you're saying, too. I think use comes into play here, right? Because it's a building that you're bringing people to, as opposed to just employees reporting to, right? So the wayfinding component, yeah, is valuable here.
Well, I also think the code is a little different in this zoning district, so a code compliant sign package would literally be that one sign that's 49 square feet and no other sign, because the code only allows one sign per site, one facade sign per site.
Yeah, so the code compliance I was referring to, Clark, was obviously what you so well listed out in terms of sizes. I definitely think relative to the number of signs is what we're commenting on here about suitability. Right.
So I think just having a second package that's in compliance to show the comparison size-wise would be helpful. Any other comments from the board or requests?
Or even just a visual that shows, you know, when you're looking at it from a reasonable distance, the 50-square-foot rendering versus the rendering that you're showing, and what you're trying to achieve with the bigger sign.
Yep, I can do that.
Good, I think. Okay, terrific. So we'll see you next time, correct?
Yeah, if you guys are ready, you could do a recommendation next time, and then we'll just figure out which zoning board we can get you on.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Bolovski.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next up in discussion items is 25 South Fagan Ave and 33 South Fagan Ave, an application for lot line adjustment. Representing for the applicants.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Devin Dickinson, I'm with CHA Consulting over in Colony. So I'm here on behalf of Matthews Auto Group. We've got a couple things on the agenda, so this lot line is kind of part of a larger project that you're probably familiar with, but essentially, we want to do an adjustment between 25 and 33 South Fagan. Those parcels are both located in the CH Commercial Highway Zone, which doesn't allow residential uses, so working with Clark and Laura, we refer to the R2 Zone, which is adjacent to these parcels, and use that as our basis for any zoning requirements. So essentially, what we're proposing for 33 South Fagan meets all of the zoning code for the, for the R2 District, with the exception of the 80-foot required lot width. We are currently proposing 56 feet, which is generally matching one of the original tax parcels that makes up what 33 South Fagan currently is. So I guess this evening, we're looking for a little bit of feedback on that, and then Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, next meeting, we'd get a recommendation to the ZBA?
Yeah.
So just to recap, so this lot line adjustment actually allows for a home that might have been recommended or asked to be demolished in the prior application to remain.
Correct.
So the sacrifices, we keep that second house, the lot line adjusts, the frontage decreases to a lot size that had existed in a vacant lot.
Correct.
On South Fagan.
Yeah, so 25 South Fagan is actually like a little less than 8,000 square feet, and then what we're going to propose to make 33 South Fagan is the 9,000 square feet to meet the zone.
Got it.
So it's a little swap of the two parcels, you're correct.
That's great.
So is it possible to do an 80-foot lot to make it so you don't need the variance?
I think it's probably a matter of balancing, you know, what we're ultimately trying to achieve with the parking, and then also maintaining that residential lot. You know, 30 feet is essentially an entire row of parking in some of an aisle, so it makes a significant impact in what we can do with the parking, so it's kind of a balance between those two things.
So, just for the board, should we be reviewing this lot line concurrent with the next agenda item?
Yeah, we can talk, and it's okay to talk about both of them mixed together.
Okay.
The thing is, the lot line adjustment in and of itself can move forward independently, which is why it's its own agenda item, because it can occur on a different timeline. But yeah, I would say what's setting the lot line is the next agenda item.
Yeah, since they're essentially one and the same from a project standpoint.
But getting to the justification or the request for the variance, I think you are creating a single-family home that has a balanced lot with setbacks that are a little more reasonable, just less linear footage.
Yeah, so again, yeah, right, we've moved this lot over.
It's longer in the back.
To the west, we're still meeting those side yard setbacks, we're meeting the rear yard setbacks. Of course, on the existing property line, all the way to the west, we don't meet, but we're not changing that either, and we meet the size, the area requirement. So it's really just that lot width.
Just as a point of reference, is that blue spruce on that portion of land that would make up the 80?
No, that, that blue spruce is...
Further to the north, right?
I believe it's kind of...
Nor, what is it? Norway spruce.
I think it's, it's hard to say, it's right, right on the cusp of 33 and 25.
Okay.
Where it currently, those lines currently sit.
Currently, okay.
Yeah, is it? Okay, there, yeah, so it's, it's just within 33 South Fagan, as of now.
Are these drawings missing some, missing some houses?
It's, it's, it stops below the one before it meets the property.
The lot line adjustment is between a vacant lot and a single-family home. The other house that we were looking at, like, it's not tall, there's a lot line adjustment. That's the one that's directly adjacent to Kia.
Since this is discussionary, you want me to launch into the greater project, and maybe it would shed some...
Okay, I was gonna say, this is a stepping stone between the two, so what we'll do is we'll formally introduce. 3900 State Street, Kia Automotive, has a site plan application requiring a special use permit for building expansion for additional service space, new signage, and merging with 25 and 17 South Fagan Ave, the expansion of the parking lot. So, go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. So if we can go to the next slide, Laura, I think, because that has the aerial photo, I think it has a lot more information on it there. So, so for a little bit of background on this, we were here two years ago for a project that entailed just the new parking area. Since then, with negotiations with Kia and some of the timeframe that Matthews is up against, we are now also doing the requested... We are now also doing the requested renovations to the dealership building. So the project itself has kind of become more inclusive of the the properties. So we are proposing the lot line adjustment to allow for the parking area. We are then proposing for seventeen and twenty five South Fagan to be combined with thirty nine hundred State Street. Which would become the dealership parcel. In that project, we are proposing some upgrades to the building. We're doing some interior renovations, moving spaces around. There really aren't substantial changes in the sales area, aside from repurposing some spaces. Exterior, there'll be a new facade, there will be new, uh, there is currently a covered drop off area for the service center. That's going to get replaced with a new enclosed drop off area. And then we're adding some service bays to the rear and side facing South Amherst. So that essentially encompasses all the upgrades to the dealership. And then we're proposing now from two years ago, a smaller parking lot. We are planting significant street trees, uh, buffer trees and landscaping, under story shrubs. Street trees on South Amherst, we're proposing to continue the privacy fence on South Amherst. And add some buffering trees in that area as well, just trying to inclusively, you know, screen this. Project from any of the residential neighbors. We are proposing from last time, a concrete sidewalk that runs from State Street along. South Fagan to the to the terminus of our property. One of the big things that came up last time, we are, we had to reconfigure it a little bit, but we are still proposing a. Unloading zones so that when they come with new vehicles, they can unload interior of the site. Because as of right now, there's only one entrance and exit into thirty nine hundred State Street. And you can't get a vehicle turned around once it's in there. So they're offloading on the streets.
Can you just show what the flow would look like for a delivery truck?
Sure, absolutely.
You don't have to say anything, you just show us as you go up there. Thank you.
Have they ever been able to get a um, a car carrier in there?
No, because there's only one way in and out and you can't actually make the turnaround any of the building corners.
Because that is very, very dangerous.
It is.
That's why we're glad to see you back.
Yeah, it is. And and from what I know, they're, you know, they're unloading in the side streets on State Street, it's. And as you come over the hill on State Street, you have no visibility.
So is the footprint of the building going to change?
So the footprint of the building is going to increase slightly. The increase would be the service areas in the back. There may be a slight increase for the service drop off and reception area, it's it's really reconfigured. It's a little wider, but it's not as long as what is currently there. So there may be some net increase there, but essentially it's the um, service bays in the back, so what is that?
So so right now, there is some parking in the building. Both along the back and that parking will still be there or that'll be gone?
There's one row of parking all the way in the back. Um, generally, I think it's it's employee parking and vehicles to be serviced.
Okay. I mean, I'm just looking at a Google map, site map right now, so there's some against the building that seems like it's going to be going away.
Correct, those are, sorry.
Yeah, the ones faced, you know, the ones that touch up against the building. Okay, so there is a, there is a size increase to the building.
Yes, yeah, the service bays are definitely in addition. The reception area is maybe slightly larger, but mostly a reconfiguration.
So what you're drawing there is showing it'll jut out. Right, the addition is going to jut out from the. I'm guessing you'll use that as a driveway in or?
Uh, are we talking about the service bays in the back?
Yeah.
The those are standalone, they're they're going to be part of the building, but they're outside the current footprint.
So there's a loss of about twelve parking spaces on the footprint of the new extension, correct?
Yeah.
It's about twelve.
Yeah.
Up from existing.
From existing, correct.
So there obviously is the house that we talked about before that. In the current plan, looks like it's no longer there.
Correct, so south seventeen South Fagan, we're proposing to remove, yes.
And that's empty now?
Yes. Yeah, that one's pretty tough shit.
And the owner? Has all of the parcels up to thirty three South Fagan, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is thirty three South Fagan occupied? No?
No.
So just to bring the board up to speed on the previous project, one of the, one of the big concerns was. Having a parking lot as a principal use for the extension of the property. And also the removal of residential houses for commercial use. So that was one of the reasons that was voted down the first time. This one definitely is a little bit um, smaller in scope. It looks like you've taken a a look at the main building. And then one of the other discussion points was you have that service building that's on, I guess it's the. Like the detailing and and the used car area on on that side. Is that part of this plan holistically looking at that when you look at that aerial?
I don't think there's any plans or or have been plans for that parcel. I think last time we talked about some landscaping, but. There's no, you know, resurfacing of asphalt or refurbishing the building that I'm aware of.
And that's same owner, same dealership?
Yeah, that that parcel is essentially, you know, before cars go out to get a quick detail, you get used inventory in, that's where they detail, clean them up.
The parking has definitely become far more organized. Than it was when we originally met with the applicant.
Good, good.
I don't know if there's, if the if the lot is lined differently or not, but um, it definitely looks a lot more. Like you, you're optimizing the space available.
Yeah, it it's it's probably an ownership thing.
Yeah. Just for an update, was there any arrangement made with the residential property to the south of that lot across Fagan?
In in.
There was just some discussions of barrier wall and some asphalt and things of that nature.
I don't think so.
They came and spoke.
I think there's um, I think there's a a fence. Or or some sort of barrier for most of that. And then we had talked about some landscaping up on the street there. Uh, but I think there's, it's either fenced or shrubbed or something for probably a good three quarters of that.
And do you know if that had been added as a result of the first application? Or is that just what's always been there?
I think that's been there. You guys haven't added any fencing, has it? This is Vincent Salvani from Matthews.
Sure.
Thank you for having me back. No, that that is the way we acquired it and we're definitely using it better than than when we first acquired it. But as we grow, just can't seem to find enough parking, which is great for customer sales. Great for town revenue, bad for flow of traffic, so accomplishing a lot of. Efficiencies through this project, plus with the beautification of the building and satisfying Kia's requirements.
So Chairman Derr-Peter, you'd mentioned from the last time, two issues, just to make it clear, right? I think, and Laura and Clark, you guys can confirm, the one issue concerning principal use of a parking lot, I think that issue is gone. Correct? Because if this is their property.
So. I think it's the same issue, it's just less because the parking lot isn't going so far. And you do still need to combine the lots and have them be a new special use permit issued. Because a car dealership, sales, parking lot, however they use it. Is going beyond the original limits of the special use permit. It's just, it's not going as far now, so it's touching less backyards on South Hamperst. And um, one, one house is remaining, but that particular issue is still the same.
Okay.
Just smaller.
I mean, I remember the last one, there was an acquisition of certain lots that would have needed to happen, right?
Right, and they actually did acquire all the lots, even though they didn't have a planning board approval, so. At the time, I think it was a contingency sale, but they ended up purchasing all of them anyway. Which is why they're allowed to do the lot line adjustment independent of a special use permit, yeah.
So the most we could, the what we're supposed to do here is make a recommendation to the town board for the special use permit, right?
Yeah, so you will need to call your own public hearing on the special use permit, uh, recommendation. You uh, would have site plan comments that you can incorporate now, or you can wait for the special use permit to come back. To run everybody. I think it was a mixed vote, it was very contentious when it was going through. But one of the main reasons in the minute anyway was that two houses were being taken down and not enough effort was being made to save that house. So that one is being addressed with this proposal and then.
Right, one meaning one house instead of two.
Right, and then um, you know, we, in in the findings that we had made. The buffering to the neighboring properties, I think the reason that there was landscaping islands and stuff on the. A property that's across um, South Fagan Ave is because. Like, I think Mr. Leflem, were you the project lead? You and Patrick McPartland?
Yeah, somebody.
Yeah, um, we wanted to make sure that they were maximizing their parking spaces before they built anymore.
And that's why I commented on the.
Also, they're kind of cl- cluttering the intersection with where they're parking the cars to, which is why the landscaping, because it was. And then, yeah, the buffering was to address a lot of the neighborhood concerns that we had heard, the sidewalk was from complete streets. I think looking back, at least the old plan was saving the Norway spruce, I can't tell if the new plan is saving the Norway spruce. But the old plan actually had a notch in the parking lot to save the Norway spruce.
So I I was out there a few weeks ago um, on the site and the power for thirty three South Fagan runs through that spruce tree. So I.
Currently or?
Currently.
The power?
The overhead power to thirty three South Fagan runs through that spruce tree. The power lines, if you go out, you'll you'll see it.
So what does that mean?
I hadn't noticed that.
You you think that you can't save the tree?
Well, I think you'd probably want to trim it up if we're going to save thirty three South Fagan now. I also think a forty inch spruce is probably near the end of its lifespan.
Oh, I don't think so, no, but um. I don't know, we could look at it again. I just, just looking at the recommendations, a tree council, that was like the huge tree that they wanted saved. They had a, and the landowner across the street had pictures of birds in the tree and that was why you built the parking lot around it. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you had an arborist look at that tree?
I can. We we, I haven't yet, but I can, that would help our case.
Well, I mean, if it's going to stay, I don't know if we'd be as concerned, but it would be good if you knew and you could share that. I I want to comment that as as a former lead, you know, my recollection of that whole presentation. Was a collective rece- receipt of comments, there was a lot of comments, a lot, a lot of neighbors came. And I felt the applicant, the applicant did a really good job trying to understand and adjust and make changes based on the comments made. Seeing the spruce being kept there was very rewarding for us because we got that, that tree became part of the con- the conversation. So if there is a way to keep it. I think that would be, that would be a favorable thing for the community, given that it's mixed. But just seeing the saving of the house, seeing the concessions made, knowing that you're still trying to solve the problem, not just for the business, but also for our community. You know, the traffic is an issue, the deliveries are continuing to be an issue, so I was very glad to see this back. You know, before the board, so that some of those things could be addressed.
We'll, we'll certainly look into this spruce tree and we'll, we'll get an arborist on board and get their recommendation.
Great.
Parking lot size wise, what's the difference between the previous application and this one?
I'd say it's probably a third smaller, that's a guess, I don't, I didn't, don't have those statistics.
Two thirds the size of the original?
Two thirds the size.
Two thirds the size of the original.
Yeah. Yeah, because there's a certain, because it's a parking lot, it's not just surface area, obviously, everything needs to flow and have the correct aisle widths. And all those things, so.
All right, and again, the one thing that has changed, so I get it straight, is now you own all those properties.
Correct, yes.
Property that seventeen Fagans on, the property that, the blank one, twenty five Fagan.
That's vacant.
And also, but you don't own the thirty three Fagan house.
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you have plans for thirty three?
Put it back on the market?
Not that I know of. I I I don't think there's any plans for it at this point.
We're considering all options, um, whether to use it for one of our employees who might need housing, putting it back on the market. Ideally, you know, we came in originally trying to take both down, not because we wanted to get rid of residential housing, but because we needed space. I think we all agreed that the first house closest to the property needs to come down, whether we like it or not. So if we were to keep it, we would certainly invest and and beautify it. If not, doing this lot line adjustment would allow us to put it back into the public and and maybe have. A residential owner who can buy it, knowing at that point, you know, I would not want to sell it to someone and then do this. I would want to be done and then give someone the option to see what they're buying, just for transparency.
That's fair.
Hello, remind me, to demolish a home, an owner of a land needs to get a building permit proof, right?
Yeah, and if it's tied in with the site plan, the seeker and everything has to be complete too.
So there's a a few good takeaways from this, as far as the connectivity, the connectivity of the sidewalks on on Fagan. Looks like there's a lot more buffering around some of the areas on Fagan and also um, around the. The main building, which is going to have the facade enhancement, which obviously looks much, much more appealing than what's currently there. I guess the big, big question for us to discuss down the line is. Is this, is this appropriate use of expansion, you know, going into the neighborhood area? And how is that balanced out with the current lot configuration use?
The buffering to the neighbors to the, to the west, I guess, yeah.
Forgive me if this is in the notes, but I was not here the last time around when this was presented. Can you give a rough estimate of, I'm intrigued by this also remedying the safety piece of dropping off vehicles? Can you speak to a rough idea of how often they're being delivered, how many are being unloaded at a time? I'm sure it varies, but maybe there's an average or a.
It can be daily, it can be a ten car carrier daily, so. That location sells between a hundred and a hundred and fifty new vehicles every month. That all have to be replaced, that are all shipped from Kia. And that's how they arrive, that's the only way they arrive. So sometimes we'll get two, two carriers in a day. And sometimes it'll be a couple of days, but they're at least a couple of times a week.
And to that, do you regulate, do you have the power of when? Those are happening in terms of the residential area?
Unfortunately, no. They don't work for us, they work for the manufacturer and and it's a. Uh, it's one of those things where we have actually communicated, here's where you can drop off, here's where you can't, but if they don't. We're not able to police that and that's where, um, we have had other towns where the police have gotten involved because. They're they're independent car carriers, it's not the same person every time, it's a different carrier, so it's an imperfect system. This allows for ease for the carrier, though, it's only going to take once for them to drop it off this way. They don't enjoy stopping in the middle of State Street, we don't appreciate them stopping in the middle of State Street, it doesn't make sense, but they've done that since. Long before we acquired the property and that's what they're used to, so there's going to be some retraining, uh, some very intentional. Communication to make sure that they know this, but there's no world in which they're not going to be excited about being able to park, unload. And then drive out onto State Street.
One of the things from the previous application was, I think you were using offsite storage for cars and delivery, do you still have that arrangement?
One, we're losing, we're looking for more. To know if you have any ideas for us. To know if you have any ideas for us. So uh, we certainly don't have enough. Even with the addition of this lot, we, we still won't have enough to cover all of our inventory. We have the Hyundai store on the other side of State Street that also has overflow, so. It's, it's great for growth, um, it's our problem, we will solve it, but within the confines of, of what we're allowed to do.
Thank you.
Coming back to the lot line adjustment application, so the lot that thirty-three, the house of thirty-three South Fagan is gonna be on. That lot is in conformance?
It doesn't need any setback variances or anything, but if you were to subdivide it today, which the lot line adjustments have to conform. It should have eighty feet of frontage and it only has fifty.
So the setbacks are fine?
Setbacks are fine. It's funny because the house is very squished towards the southern line, which is on the top of the page there. Currently, yeah, so these things, they don't get cited because the lot line adjustment doesn't change them, but the house itself is sitting. It's squished over to the other side, so that's why it doesn't really, it would, if they weren't taking the shed down, the shed would cause problems, but they're proposing. To remove the shed.
The shed's in pretty bad shape.
Yeah, and like, I'm assuming you would also remove all that asphalt, obviously, because otherwise you would easily have trespasses. But yeah, so all of this part would get removed.
In, in, in the new site plan, we're also proposing a privacy fence along that line as well, in anticipation that it's a residential lot.
So that setback relative to the privacy fences, an okay setback?
For all the structures that remain, yeah.
I did not get a chance to visit the area this weekend and I really want to do that before I come to any decision.
Understood.
So the last time we looked at this, we didn't really get into the engineering of the stormwater detention pond anything because the special use permit wasn't a guarantee. So we were looking at it conceptually with our recommendation to the town board. I would anticipate that that's similar this time, or are you guys farther along on the engineering?
So we've done feasibility studies on the stormwater to make sure that we can do it. Um, as of now, in discussions with yourself and Clark, we've held off on pursuing it any further, but we are ready whenever.
Okay, so it's kind of up to you guys. This plan, unless you give them a lot of feedback, probably isn't gonna change. Unless you give them a lot of feedback and you have looked at it before, so without, then they don't have to do the engineering because you're talking about use right now. Your next step on this, when you're ready, is to call for the public hearing.
Team and Laura, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little stuck.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you can, if you can zoom into this drawing. If you don't mind, towards the back, the privacy, the privacy fence, yeah. So those dimensions that we're seeing there, the short arrow dimension, dimensions like nine point five, six point one, five point three, those are. Compliant R two setbacks from that privacy fence?
So.
Are you talking about the existing setbacks?
Yeah.
They, they remain unchanged, we're not touching that line. But they are not compliant.
Right, but we're gonna do something to this lot.
Yes, but we do lot line, like Eiffelmore, like you guys looked at Fillmore. There are existing non-conformities on the lot that isn't shifting. Those ones aren't cited.
Okay, good. I just want to make it clear. So they actually are not conforming, but we're not gonna be considering them because we don't consider.
Yes, I, I thought you were talking to the. Yes, they are non-conforming to that.
And it's R two that applies here.
It is. Actually, there is a tiny portion of R two in the very back, very back of this lot, yeah. So we do the stricter.
Alright, so my question's clear, I got a clear answer, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, sorry, I was.
Right? None of those setbacks in the back, pre-existing, meet the R two setbacks.
Six point one, nine point five, none of those do.
Yep, okay. And any action we take in a lot line adjustment doesn't address those.
Correct, those are pre-existing non-conforming.
Alright.
Okay.
Good, so this one, uh, good candidate for project leader two, if anyone's interested.
I'd gladly do it again.
Okay, Mr. Leflem, thank you. Alright, so like Laura said, the next step will be for us to probably take another look at this. I think if we are comfortable at that point, we'll. Call for the public hearing.
Okay. There any action items for us aside from looking into this spruce tree? Is there any other information that you feel lacking?
I looked through the, I wasn't here the last time it went through either, but um. You said you had some of the additions to the building, um, getting the, um, the wheel path for the unloading.
Oh, you want to see the vehicle tracking?
Yeah, just to, just to see how that, how that still continues to, to flow through the property.
Yep, we can do that.
Would be useful. And then, just a question for Laura. So on the use table, it says permitted use. What makes it a special use?
It is.
Commercial neighborhood?
Uh, yeah, no. The use tables, if you're just looking at the schedules, they don't clarify which is a.
Yeah, that's, that's why, yeah.
Yeah, so you have to go to the district regulations at two twenty dash ten and then you guys go all the way down to commercial highway. And then it separates out special principal uses or automobiles, automobile sales and service establishments. So when the lot line shifting and it's going up, it's taking over more space than it was before, since it's all gonna be a single parcel. That's gonna be the special use permit. Yeah.
Now, is that an amendment to that existing? Special use permit, or is it?
I mean, you could call it an amendment. It's, if you don't get the special use permit granted, it's not gonna take away the old one. Yeah, it's not like you're risking, um, you're risking the old one by going forward and you're expanding it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, mostly just out of curiosity.
So if we were to look at these two applications separately. What argument, wait, what argument, I'm asking, I'm asking the, the planning board and the, what argument would we make for the creation of that eighty foot, eighty foot frontage lot? If we had to recommend positively for this lot line adjustment to the ZBA?
To go from eighty to fifty.
I'm hard time with that one.
I mean, if you look at it from a disconnected point of view, you're taking the other lot from fifty to a hundred.
What might be useful information for the board to have is how many parking spots are lost? And what that would do to the expansion and how those parking spaces would be used and why the additional would be needed, right? Because. Because those are just kind of hard facts for us.
Transparency and where my head's at, it's. I'm walking down the path of treating these two applications separately, for now, because they are bearing as two separate applications. Does not stay that way, but for now, that's what it is, right? So we have a lot line adjustment in front of us. Yeah, we know what might be, we know what might be coming as the next step after that, this application's a lot line adjustment. And it's gonna create a variance that doesn't exist today or that needs to go to the ZBA. And I'm just trying to.
That I don't think we can look at them separately. Same owners, they own all the properties, it's all part of the same. The only reason the lot line's here is for the whole thing, so. I don't know if you can decouple them.
So, so we can, so we can, I don't have a preference on any of this, let's walk down the logic of that one, right? So in the logic of that one. Then the thing that would justify the creation of a non-conforming lot with the fifty foot frontage is the building of a parking lot.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. So a special use permit, it's a higher level of review. A lot line adjustment is almost administrative, but it has to come to the planning board. And they have a right at any point in time to do a lot line adjustment that is conforming. This one is not conforming because of the application for a special use permit. That would theoretically be something that they would have to show planning board and zoning board why they can't do the eighty feet. So that's a really important.
No, no, hang on. I mean, it's, it's just like the previous Fillmore we did, right? It becomes not conforming because the lot line adjustment creates a non-conforming lot that needs to go to the ZBA.
Right, yeah, if they, if, if they just showed it as eighty foot, foot frontage, they, you know. Regardless of what special use permit they want to take, they could do that as a right. They just can't do fifty feet as a right.
Right, yeah.
And then there's the question if this use goes away. Has that lot one adjustment made the property? Less usable or anything like that? What's the impact long term? Because there's always that possibility.
I mean, that, that lot that gets created, and that's why I asked about those pre-existing.
Realtor's daughter, I have to think of those things.
This lot is, this fifty foot lot is awfully narrow.
The fifty foot one?
Yeah, the one that gets created now.
But it also doesn't have a six foot side setback anymore. It gets clearer, it gets more, it gets more setback space on the back and on the side. To the north. Am I missing that?
It's not changing, it's funny because it, north and south are, we'll just say left of the drive. The left of the, um, the left lot line of, of thirty-three is not changing. So the setbacks, that six foot setback, they're non-conforming and they're not changing.
Thirty-three used, thirty-three's northern side, if you use this way as north, used to be here. They're moving it here.
Yeah.
So we're, right?
Yeah, so.
So it's, it's, but, and the other, isn't the, the other side's not changing at all?
He's taking this dotted lot line here, this, this one that's kind of dotted. And he's pulling it up to much closer to the house.
Correct.
But where he pulls it to the house, these setbacks are all in conformance.
All setbacks are in conformance.
Except the fifty feet.
And isn't there more space in the back of the house being?
No.
No, there's not.
That's not changing, no.
It's not changing.
And then the shed's gonna get removed.
And the shed will get removed.
Correct.
But I mean, it is a hard sell with the zoning board when you have a vacant lot to explain why you wouldn't be going to eighty feet, which is. Why you have to also explain the special use permit and why you're really gonna have to look at what it does to your parking lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do think it has to be looked at comprehensively, right? There's a vacant house next to that house now. People don't like to buy houses that are vacant. Like, there, there's a comprehensive plan that I think needs to be explained, I believe.
Well, right, because otherwise you would be doing a lot line adjustment with a vacant lot and creating a non-conforming lot to make a vacant lot bigger. So, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct, and isn't there the potential for twenty-five thirty-three South Fagan to move faster than this project?
Right, they could, yep, because it's a totally different process, the lot line adjustment.
Yeah, correct.
The reasons for it, you can see are concurrent.
Okay. Well, maybe we package this back to the applicant to say if it's in your best interest to. We've taken an initial look at the lot line adjustment. Maybe we work through thirty-nine hundred State Street first and then.
Make it all one.
Revisit and come back. Well, no, it would still be, still be two separate.
Would they have the right to make it one? As the owner, the grantor of all three properties, just make it be one application, we then go to the zoning board, okay?
You can't, because they're two separate items.
Okay.
Correct.
And the, the only downside to doing it that way is if you went along with the special use permit, the zoning board isn't bound by any of that. And if they don't have a, a, say, from the zoning board on where the lot line goes. All the work that you do could be undermined by the lack of a variance being granted, so.
They're under connected, intertwined, but in a way separate.
Yeah.
Well, the uniqueness of this neighborhood code type, I think, you know, make, I hope that's understood, that's all. By the, the zoning board of appeals. This is a commercial neighborhood decision.
Yeah, so, so just to be clear, to reiterate, and I asked a question earlier, you answered, and let me just reflect back what I heard. The previous application for which there was the split vote, et cetera. The only difference between that application and this application is, so let me, can you fill in the blank?
They're saving the house.
They're saving the house, that's currently vacant.
And they're reducing the number of parking.
And they're reducing the number of parking. Yeah, I think there may.
But everything else stays the same.
Yeah.
But what this one has introduced is now a required variance. Because of a lot line adjustment.
Well, because the house is staying. Also, the amount of adjacencies has decreased.
Yes.
So there's three, three things that were pretty substantially discussed by the community that this proposal is addressing. Plus enabling us to have a safer State, State Street.
But the old application did not need an area variance, that's right.
So in some extent, this application's a little bit worse.
Well, I was a huge proponent of not taking the houses down, so I don't know that I can agree with that statement.
Okay, but again, we get back into a subjective realm again.
Right, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Right.
I'm not sure what you mean by worse.
It's introducing a non-conformance that has to be resolved, that wasn't there in the previous application. In the previous application, there was a, let me call it a.
We could take the house down, I guess.
A policy.
I mean, the house could come down, right? It won't, but that's.
The taking down of a house is a little bit more, is it fair to say it's a little bit more of a subjective read in our code than an objective read?
I mean, yeah, in our site, in our code, there isn't a prohibition on taking down single family homes.
Yes, however, the introduction of a fifty foot fronting lot is something that our code will require variance for. So therefore, I'm gonna make the claim in the letter of our code, not the spirit. On the letter of our code, this app, these two applications are less conforming than the previous one. By that one factor of introducing a fifty foot fronting lot.
I don't think that carries any weight. I don't know if that matters. If we're looking for life safety, if we're looking for something that conforms to the code of. Neighborhood commercial, I think we need to be looking.
No, I agree. All those other factors, though, with life safety all remain the same, right? Between the last application and this one. We're gonna get the benefit of deliveries not happening on State Street, et cetera, et cetera. It's just that.
I think it depends on what you're gauging.
I don't think.
The number of steps required of us, that, then that's one versus, like you're saying, this is a more difficult application. I think what we're just, I think, right, what Chris is saying is it's, it depends how you evaluate it. If you're looking at the overall impact and benefit. Versus just the number of things that have to be done to achieve it.
Yep.
It depends.
I mean, the applicant might be a little shell shocked, but they could come back and have the question, it looks exactly like the last one.
And, and Mr. Congress is right, in that the, the zoning board might deny it.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's a possibility because they're separate.
The last one had a positive recommendation from the Conservation Advisory Council. With the, one of the main reasons being sort of tearing up the fabric of the community by removing a house so deep into a residential zone. That the first house is like directly adjacent to the parking lot. I think it had a, it had a sale provision with the. The guy that lived, that owned it before Matthews, um, and I don't know that that one was as damaging as going that far down that road to take that. Second house and my understanding, they did not take a vote, but the town board was definitely considering adopting the CAC's. Positive declaration, which would require all of us to look at other options that included not taking other house down. So the town board didn't do that step because the applicant withdrew the proposal and now I think they're taking those steps to address. Alternatives that would keep the house. So that's really where you're at. If they went back to the one where they were removing both houses. I mean, the steps and the recommendations, like, you know, unless we did something egregious before. Our findings should be similar, if not the same, if it's the exact same proposal, which would put it exactly in the same place that it was before the town board again. So I just want to make sure.
Laura, I just wanted to, I just, I'm just looking at the letter of the code and just the number of. Steps and non-conformances we have to deal with between the applications, but that's, that suffices for now.
And it's not into the residential zone, it's all still in the CH, right?
There's a tiny piece, there's a tiny piece of R two.
The tiny corner.
Yeah, there's a tiny corner.
It's up to the edge of the CH.
Yeah, the CH.
I mean, the tiny part is the R two part.
Yes, exactly.
And we're talking tiny, tiny.
No, I know, we're talking like.
Yeah, so, so I'm still back at the original quandary statement then. So forget everything I said about the previous application, not forget, but I'm, I'm gonna leave that point. Come back to this one. If we're dealing with two separate applications, I don't know how to justify the creation of a fifty foot frontage lot. To the ZBA.
I, I agree, except that this is not two separate applications. They're being delivered.
That's how they appear right now.
They're, they're being delivered as such, but we're all aware of why we're even here now. And that we have a liability for not approving or finding a way, not us, but, you know, it's on the applicant. But I've, since we've turned that down, I've lost sleep on, on that very issue of State Street. It's not just State Street. It's not just the turning lane, it's at the crest of the hill and there's already crazy behavior by pedestrians. So I want to find a way to approve and approve, uh, an application that is meeting the needs. The best that we can. as best that we can. I'm not, I'm not putting my hand forth, we're gonna go through the process, figure out what the A's and A's are, but I do not think we can separate these. I understand what Mr. Congress is saying. Logically, I would do the same thing, and that's the way we should be looking at this, because the zoning board might not approve that, and then where do we stand? They have to be aware of why we're, we're revisiting this.
Yeah, you know, and I'm sorry about the semantics, like, they're, they are just two separate items, like, if you put them on the same agenda statement, you could do that, and maybe that was what we should have done, and it was confusing for us to separate them out, or maybe we should have put the site plan first. There is no reason that you can't discuss the fact that the lot line adjustment is working through the site plan, and it would be crazy for them to go to the zoning board and say, we're just doing this lot line adjustment with a vacant lot. Of course, they're going to show them why they're doing the lot line adjustment and what the parking lot configuration was, and what the impact of the parking lot configuration would be if they don't have the fifty feet. That is a, a right that they would have to go to the zoning board to justify why they're not having the eighty feet, and it's something that you guys can look at too. Um, it's just that they would be allowed to do it even without the site plan, but they are asking for it with the site plan, so you definitely don't have to carve that out and say, this has nothing to do with the site plan. It has all of the things to do, and maybe we should do it separately, so it's site plan, special use permit, and then lot line adjustment. And like, you guys said, you could go through the special use permit process and then go to the zoning board and say, now we have the special use permit, can you, can you consider the fifty feet? Just puts a lot more sort of, kind of unknown on the back end of the, you know, a lot of people would go to the zoning board at the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, agreed, and, and so for everyone's words, I don't think it's a semantics thing, right, Laura? I mean, right now, in the package in front of us, there's two distinct applications signed by the applicant.
Yeah, which Clark and I required them to do.
Right, yep. So I know we're getting close to a legal boundary here, with the planning board making some kind of a recommendation about the nature of the application. Nobody said that, right? But it's something then, based in this discussion, that you guys have to consider.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Bye.
And I think from a broader picture, we've gotten here collectively with the board and with input. You know, there's, there has been no small amount of thought in design that's gone into this, and taking into consideration the neighborhood, taking into consideration the needs of the dealership. I personally think we've, we've done a pretty good job compromising to satisfy all, all parties involved. And part of that is this lot. You know, we're gonna save this house. We'd like to do the fifty foot wide lot. You know, all the lots in South Amherst are that wide. You know, it fits in with the neighborhood, we feel like it's a fair compromise.
Do you know if other dealerships on State Street, Central Avenue are still being serviced by tying up, uh, the road for the car deliveries? Because I know, well, I don't commute anymore like I did. I used to see it regularly at several dealerships, not just yours.
I don't know. I don't know how much they share information really between dealerships, so if it's not one that Matthews owns, I, I don't know. Unless somebody has experience with it, I, I.
No, but.
It's not a unique phenomenon here.
They're, they're there, it happens, I'm.
I, I'm not gonna tell you that solving us solves everything, but we are one of the bigger players. Right. So this definitely takes a larger percentage of the trucks off the road. There are other dealerships that have constraints. What's good about the other dealerships is they have less frequent deliveries. They're not a volume car dealer. So that, I mean, that's not great for them, but it's, it's great for traffic on State Street.
For the record, just gonna put this on the record, it is illegal for them to stop in the turning lane and unload the cars. So if the police do go by, they make them move. It is illegal.
And we've told them that.
It does still happen.
It has been done regularly for years.
I know, but it is illegal. They do also unload them on the side streets, and we get complaints from the neighbors that they're having the cars unloaded in front of their houses at all hours of the day. Um, but the unloading in the street is illegal.
And we have to be recon, we have to recognize this as a CN neighbor. We'd like the neighbors to not feel like they're loading. A CH, but we don't wanna see them suffer through a commercial exercise on theirs, in front of their house.
No, by all accounts, getting an on, off-street offloading area is a huge benefit to the town, there's no question.
Is it a, is it an obligation?
To continually talk about how we're going to solve the problem of them offloading in the streets, like, it's our problem, that is legal. They should not be doing that.
And, and I think that the unloading of the cars is more of an internal issue to the applicant uh, on the property, you know, even if there was an application that had another curb cut on Amherst or South Fagan or something. That, that's easily solvable. I mean, I, I move a lot of trucks around on construction sites, so it's queuing up, having space, sometimes that means taking away a couple parking spaces, whether they're dedicated for guests or, you know, sales or whatever it is, knowing that the turn radius has to happen internally to a building. We, we have guys that have to do literally jackknife turns with sixty-foot trailers to get in and out of sites, and they do it, so. Yeah, you just have the frequency of multiple times a week.
We did, uh, as we did with vehicle tracking, we tried to run it all through that site. And unfortunately, you can't get around the building, the only other way to do it would be another curb cut on South Fagan, which we're essentially proposing.
Okay.
And just quick, what, what's the condition of the building, the, the house that's gonna remain at thirty-three?
Uh, I'd say fair.
What, what, you know, when it was last occupied?
I think it was occupied a couple of years ago, right?
It was occupied, um, just before the closing, so we closed on that house, the, the house adjacent to the dealership was not occupied. Under unfortunate circumstances, we took that over. That one is the one that I believe at the last meeting, we all agreed wasn't an issue. The second house was the one that we were trying to save. If I'm being honest, this, the second house isn't desirable. Uh, we're not landlords, we're, we're not in the real estate, you know, the residential real estate, so it's not ideal for us. This is, I feel, a pretty significant compromise on our part to figure out how to keep that, because our team thought we buy three pieces of property, we have a legal right to go knock the houses down, then we come in and we, we have a design that we present to the board, and we didn't do it in that order, we came here and said this is what we wanna do, and that's just who we are, we're, we're a transparent group. And then we came back and said, okay, we did not know, we couldn't take the house down. And I think Laura said, you, you can. You can, but it negatively impacts how you're going to look at the project. So what we've done is, yes, we've shrunk the lot line down to keep this house. What we won't do is let it just sit there and cave in on itself. It needs, it needs work. If you drive by it, I encourage you to drive by it. We're going to have to invest even more money in that, which is costing me space that I can use to make money to, to somehow turn it into something that I can at least break even on.
Yeah, so I, I think along those lines, because that was gonna be my question, is to, to have the benefit of saving the house, we wouldn't wanna see it just to be a vacant ghost house for.
Same.
Yeah, so.
Same.
Um, I, I think that, that carries a lot more weight with the non-conforming lot, with the overall plan, if, if what you just articulated is part of the plan, that the house is gonna get some, you know, cruising ups, like, whether you keep it for employees or whether you try to sell it off and get rid of it, that it can actually be a livable house.
Yeah.
I think there is a market for fixer-uppers.
Uh, and I don't, I don't disagree with you. Certainly, we're gonna look at every option at that point. What we're not going to do is buy it and forget about it. Right now, time isn't on our side, obviously. We wanna know where we're at with the board so that we know what our next move is, but we've gotta go through the process, so we're back. And, and we're starting at a point where I think we're further along. At the final last meeting, I felt that were it not for that second house being in the conversation, we wouldn't be here right now, that lot would be paved. That's kind of the feeling that I got, and I don't know if I'm wrong for thinking that, but that's certainly, when we went through and explained everyone's reasoning for voting no, that was the universal thought, so we went back to CHA and said, okay, we wanna be good partners with this town, we wanna take into consideration the town and Niskayuna's thoughts and concerns, therefore, we'll figure this out. The way we're figuring it out, sounds like it complicates it a little bit more. It would certainly be easier for me if that house wasn't there, but it is, and we intend to keep it as a compromise so that we can continue operating successfully in this, in this town.
And it's not just that there's a house, it's a house that's part of an existing neighborhood, and it's one of our more affordable. We don't have a lot of affordable housing in town. And that's all part of the picture.
I heard, I heard you loud and clear last time, which is why that house is still here.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate your comments. Yep. Right, so, so I think we, you know, we have a, we have a responsibility now to either, we're dealing with two applications in front of us, or maybe it's one application. We need to make the arguments to the board, I agree, always going to the ZBA first. Right, is always the, getting clear from them where it is and then having us proceed, right? You know, look, it's public because it's in the minutes, I'm the only member of the planning board right now that was a, I vote for the last application. Right? So. Yep, I just looked at it. Everyone else is either not, was not on the board at the time, or voted no. So I, I, I think I've said my piece about the old application, I'll try my best not to bring it up again. But let's try to get this one to be what it needs to be so that it can fulfill something for the business or the community on that, right?
Okay, yeah.
I'm still having a hard time with justifying a fifty-foot frontage lot to the ZBA.
So that's a really important point. You, your next step on the special use permit is to call for a public hearing, but yeah, your other next step would be to do a recommendation on the lot line adjustment.
No, just for a point of clarity, and it's probably minor, but when I was speaking with Clark, he said it's actually lot width, not frontage. So it would be the width either kind of in the middle or.
Yeah, we use those terms interchangeably.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, next steps, where are we at?
Um, I think at this point, we're still in a discussion period.
Okay.
So we have a project lead. Um, I think a site visit would be good.
Yeah.
Between now and the next meeting, we are on the docket for uh, May fifth. So site visits are always good. I know a couple of us have already been on there, or have gone to the site previously when we saw the other project, but there's a lot of new faces up here. And a couple not in attendance tonight, so it would be in their best interest to go take a look, walk the streets, take a look at the areas, um, you know, spruce, everything up to the lot lines, to the south end of the properties that you're budding, also on Amherst, like you said, those are smaller frontages, so to get a feel for the neighborhood, it's always worth it.
Can I just ask a quick question? Assuming that everything was approved, everything could go forward, excuse me, what is, what do you see as you're getting over the finish line to have it done? If you could, if you walked out of here today and we said, go for it, how long would it take for you to implement all of these things?
I have a shovel in my car.
Yeah, it would be, I mean, it would be as fast as they possibly could, could push it through, yeah, it's, it's a definite need. The building renovations, there's still some negotiations with Kia and Design, but that's not far behind.
Thank you.
But your site work would move pretty quickly.
Yeah, as, as soon as, as soon as allowable.
Right, and it could, I mean, just from looking at where the application is, your construction could be limited to a smaller thing, it would almost be to your benefit to do the parking lot first, because you're gonna lose a lot of site around the front.
That's the hope of everybody involved.
Understood, okay. All right.
If, if that site visit, if you want someone from Matthews present for that site visit, I'm coming from Syracuse. I could just get some notice as to when you wanna meet there.
I was gonna ask, who, who, who would you, if we did have a request for that, would it be you or?
I would prefer it be me, and if, and if I couldn't get here, I would have someone from our group.
I don't know if we need that, but we could make that request.
If you wanna just coordinate with me, like, tomorrow with some dates, then we could throw them up to the board and type in.
Well, just let me know if you want me present for that, I think we did.
I think you guys both were there last time, weren't you?
Yeah, well, let's just put it out there, when are you here?
Uh, uh, I'm flexible.
Okay, right, so we'll just pick a day that, that works, maybe next week or something.
If I can make it, I will, otherwise I'll just go very slowly around the neighborhood like I did last time.
Sure.
I've walked it in the past.
Me too.
Yeah, the sidewalk would be an amazing addition.
Yeah.
The shoulder is really not good.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much, everybody.
All right, next up is twenty-three oh one, Knott Street East, a site plan application for a tenant change to Katrina's Mexican Grill. And if someone from the applicant here?
Excuse me?
Someone from the applicant? Yes, introduce yourself.
My name is Oscar. I'm a new owner for the restaurant I'm coming.
Okay.
I don't know, I can, I never see the paper for the sign. Where I got it placed, but here, I don't know, you guys wanna see? The signage.
Yeah, I think that was separate, correct?
Uh, yeah, I believe we had said.
If the sign meets, um, the zoning criteria, they could just swap out the name.
Okay.
Um, if it has a picture, I don't think, the old one, well, the old one had the tequila leaves, I think.
Yeah. So what you can do is, since that, that's not part of our package tonight, we'll just talk about the tenant change, and then you can submit that to Laura at the planning department, and then we'll take a look at that as it comes through. But, um, to recap, this is pretty straightforward, it's, uh, location of the old Tequilas. Um, looks like it's minimal interior renovations to the inside, same approximate layout, correct? Okay. Any other enhancements or anything like that?
No, we, uh, there's only decoration, we changed the tile only.
Okay.
And as one wall, um, supposed to be in there before, like, you know, when you open the door and it says no, it's like, we try and build in again, the wall to cover the zone.
Okay.
And you're keeping the deck?
Yes. Yes, everything is gonna be the same.
Do you know why Tequila's left?
I don't know.
You don't know?
Or the restaurant before that? I, I have a hard time believing that they can't make something work there. Fine piece.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So everything looks to be good with our comprehensive plan, pretty straightforward project, I think that we could call for a resolution at the next meeting.
Yeah. The use is totally consistent.
Yeah, we'll check the signage if it needs any waivers, you guys could check it for the draft, but yeah, I agree if we could get it.
Yeah, we can move forward with the, a resolution for the tenant change, and then we'll just work with planning department on the signage, we can always review those separately, that's not a problem.
Okay. And, and again, Laura, right, as the building department always does, right, we can advise the applicant to make a compliant sign and.
Right, yeah, well, I think Tequila's is or was compliant, so if they just swap out the name, that can just be part of the, if there's something with the logo that needs a waiver, then we can call it out, but yeah.
All right.
So you guys get?
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, uh, that finishes up discussion items, moving on to reports. Turn over to Mr. Robertson.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we talked about daycares in residential zones, the lighting requirements, the fee updates. Due to a massive zoning board packet, I was not able to get the agenda statement ready for today, but just keep thinking about anything you're thinking of in the zoning code that we could discuss, and I'll try and put together a, a good list for the next meeting.
And what about the motor home that's been living basically around the, uh, rotary at the bridge?
Yeah, I will look into that, I, I know I looked before and I couldn't remember if it's a code violation or not, but I thought it was going to be moved and it hasn't been moved, so we will, we will definitely look into that one.
Where is that?
I'm sure it's at least a couple of years.
Yeah, that's true.
Where is this?
So on the Rexford Traffic Circle at the Williams Auto, there's a RV that's kind of sitting right along the traffic circle, which normally it would have been moved by now. But it's not, haven't, it hasn't moved.
Okay. I'm assuming the police checked it out, like?
Well, it's at a repair shop, so normally he would repair it and then it would go.
Okay.
But I, I agree with.
So we don't think anyone's living in there?
I don't know.
We should probably check, we will check.
Yeah.
I just know it's been there a long, long time.
Yeah, we'll check on it.
I know there people have complained to me about it.
All right.
And, uh, update on ten forty-five Palmer Ave?
Yeah, we just, did we talk about the meeting that we had with Sandra?
We, we briefly mentioned it last time.
Oh, okay.
Nothing, so nothing.
No, nothing changed.
Something new happened, I wasn't.
No, I couldn't remember if we discussed that. No, I couldn't remember if we discussed that.
Right. So to recap, right? Um, you know, Ms. Griffin and her, uh, her surveyor worked to make some drawings. And her intent again on splitting the lots will end up creating two forty-foot fronting lots. And we asked to actually see the house she has in mind placed in that lot, the new one created. And we expressed, you know, the different challenges involved. What's being proposed, right? It might have a certain suitability, lot frontage wise to Old Niskayuna. But there are going to be some setback challenges, et cetera.
Oh, and actually something that came from that meeting, which we might want to consider as zoning code updates, but it's a heavy lift, is, um, kind of like the accessory home care, accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
Um, that comes up a lot. We usually kind of shy away from it because it's a big change to our zoning, but.
We do have ADUs in the zone.
We do. Yep. They.
Very limited.
They're very limited. Yes, they're very limited. And they have to be removed when the need is no longer there and they can't be.
Supposed to be.
And they can't be detached and things like that. So they definitely are limiting to people who.
Yeah, but since we're talking about it, Laura, I'm sorry, did you finish the point in the home? I think relative to, from, from a script, and I think once she presents this drawing, we should encourage her to come back to the planning board with a specific application request then.
Yeah.
I think we'll have all the information there to look at what we're looking at. And then be able to, it will end up being a ZBA recommendation.
Yeah, it will.
Right? And so we just need to get clear what all the variances that are going to be asked for are. Yeah, but I think we need to move the process along, right? Clark once had made a very nice timeline. Many, many months have passed since that timeline is, so we can always insert ourselves back into.
Yeah. Well, and that one's hard to, just to remind, because it also needs the subdivision approval from.
Right.
Cities Connected.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Yeah, it's an interesting project.
Yeah. And I think Ms. Griffin understands that, but we just need to.
Yeah, she does. It seemed like the original intent with the subdivision, though, was to try and figure out a way to live an agent place.
Right.
Which kind of gets to the.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Laura that the ADU code section would be worth looking at at some point.
Yeah, ours, ours is definitely quite different from the City of Schenectady's. The City of Schenectady's got a more liberal take on a accessory dwelling unit than we do.
But from the.
Ours is pretty old.
Ours is pretty old. Yeah.
But from the planning perspective, do you get a lot of applications that come in asking if it's a possibility?
For, um, for an accessory dwelling?
Accessory dwelling, yeah.
Um, you know, we get a number of people who would like to put in a, you know, like, we'd have to be careful because I mean, we get a lot of people on a vacant lot or something who'd like to put a duplex, because obviously you're increasing your, you know, profit when you put more units in. Um, vacant places, they always want to do duplexes or something. Um, we do get a number of people who want to have a mother-in-law move in, but would like it to be an accessory building. I think that's gone to the zoning board on occasion multiple times. And, um, we have had things where people invested a lot of money into the, into the, the home care unit and then sold, went to sell the house. And we've allowed the contingent, like that they can sell the house with the home care unit if they disclose that the only way that you can use it is if you have somebody already when you move in that can qualify for a home care unit. That did work once, but I mean, it, it, you, we deal with it, um, on occasion, probably every month or two, we've got a accessory dwelling, dwelling unit question.
Okay.
That's more frequent than I would.
Yeah, it's definitely more than I would have expected, but.
Yeah.
I think that there's great ways that you could take a larger site and put something that's a mix of a carriage house with a unit above that's setback on the property tastefully done.
Right. The, the key issue at hand is the fact that our code now requires that when it's done being used as an adult use, that it gets demolished.
Yeah, I mean, you can keep the bedroom if you build the bedroom, but if it has a kitchen and a separate, you know, some, then that stuff should be removed.
And it has to be a relative, right?
It has to be relative and you have to have proof of the need and, yeah. It can't just be like, I want my, you know, college child to have the space here, so that.
All right, all right. Or I want to build a detached, uh, short-term rental building.
It does.
That's what I was.
Yeah, it is. That is an interesting too, like, so hosted rentals would benefit from accessory dwelling units, because then you could have the, yeah. It's definitely a question. Yeah, it is.
We don't want to encourage more.
The hosted, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, commission business? Any members? All right. Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's moved by Ms. Gold?
Second.
Second by Ms. Blavsky. All in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned at eight thirty-five PM. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, Clark.